Good evening, welcome to tonight's, May 14, 2018, Homewood City Council meeting. Before we start getting into our agenda, we have several visitors, I believe, here today. So I'm gonna let you guys come up, you can come up to the podium and speak to us, and speak to the folks here. We'll begin with Bill Veitch for District Attorney.
Yes, sir.
Please, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Bill Veitch. I'm running for District Attorney, Jefferson County. A little bit about who I am. My first real job was at U.S. Steel. I worked at the ore plant in Winona as a laborer. I left there, went to UAB to college, and while I was in college, I got enamored of being a police officer, so I took the civil service test and became a Birmingham police officer. While I was with Birmingham, I decided I wanted to go to law school, so went to Birmingham School of Law while I was a police officer. And when I passed the bar, I still hung around for a year because they sent me to the FBI Academy, and then they got tired of me, really. They don't know if they trusted me anymore, being a lawyer. But anyway, I left and started practicing law, practiced law for 18 years, and then I went to the District Attorney's Office in the Bessemer cutoff. That's the part that can't vote. I can't vote for myself, but I can be the DA, I just can't vote for myself right now. But District Attorney's Office, I was the chief assistant for 15 years, and then the last year I was there, I was the District Attorney. So I've got 18 years with the District Attorney's Office. But everybody you hear from is gonna have experience. I mean, that's, if you've been around as long as I have, you've got experience. But the reason you should vote for me is simple. I'll show up, I want to come and help you, I'm gonna increase the number of investigators down there, as opposed to having so many assistant DAs, and I want to show up. And you'll be doing me more of a favor than I'm doing you, because I don't want to spend all my time at that Birmingham courthouse. I'll be honest with you. I want to be out in the communities doing things. So, Mr. Mayor, Council, if you need me, you won't have to find me. All you gotta do is call and say, "Bill, we got a problem, we need you to come out here and do whatever," and I would be glad to come out here. And one last thing, the warrant procedure downtown is gonna change when I'm the District Attorney. You ask your police officers what it's like to go downtown now to try to get a warrant. It's like they've gotta prove their case beyond a reasonable doubt to get a warrant down there. That's gonna change. I'm police officer-oriented, and I work well with them, and I swear my heart is. So, June the 5th, Republican primary, I sure appreciate your vote, and I won't let you down, and I'll make you proud that you voted for me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Veitch. Next, we have Judge Patricia Stevens for Domestic Relations Court, Place 15. Judge Stevens.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. I am Judge Patricia Stevens, and you elected me to serve you as your Circuit Court Judge, Place 15, in 2012. And I currently sit as the presiding judge in that court. I'm no stranger to hard work. My undergraduate degree is from Auburn University, my law degree is from Miles Law School, both, for both of those degrees, I worked full-time. I started years ago, in the early 80s, with Alabama Power Company as a laborer. Even with my degree from Auburn, worked my way up through the ranks until I had an exempt level position, but I also went to law school while I was working for Alabama Power Company. I left when I passed the bar, I went to work at Jefferson County DA's office, worked as a prosecuting attorney for almost 10 years. When I left there, I went to a general practice law firm, worked with them for three years, and then took the bench, ran for that office, and was elected. My passion is making sure that we have shared custody with our children, that each parent who wants to be involved is actively involved in their children's lives, and that's where my passion has been. I'm also big into making sure that the people who stand in front of me who don't have employment are referred to a job readiness or the Impact U-Turn program. So I am asking to serve once again as Circuit Court Judge, Place 15. I am Patricia Stevens, and thank you.
Great, thank you, Judge Stevens. And lastly, I believe we have Danny Carr, also seeking District Attorney spot. Thank you, Mr. Carr.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and City Council, and City Attorney. Thank you, and I'll be very brief, because I know you have important business here, but I want to just take a brief moment to introduce myself to you and tell you a little about me. My name is Danny Carr, I'm a candidate for District Attorney in the Birmingham Division of Jefferson County. I've been at the District Attorney's Office in the Birmingham Division for 17 years. Matter of fact, July 4th will be 18 years. And I'm from Birmingham, born and raised here, I'm from the Enslie area. And as you know, that's one of the roughest sides of town, but nowadays, the 21st century prosecutor must understand and be fully aware of two things. Number one, continue to prosecute cases, because the bad guys, we gotta do what we have to do with them. But also, we need to be on the forefront of prevention. We need to be in the community, not when you're running, not when you're asking for votes, but simply because you want to try to stop some of the violence that's going on and plaguing our communities. You need to be in the schools, not because you're running, but because you want to try to be a part of the solution, to try to fix the problem. I served there in all capacities, from interim DA, entry-level, division chief, chief deputy, and I was appointed interim DA by our presiding judge. At some point, I was removed, not because of the lack of skill, or not because of the job I was doing, but for other reasons. I will urge you to ask the criminal court bar in the Birmingham Division, ask the judges that are there, ask the lawyers who practice in the Birmingham Division, did Danny do a good job? Was he prepared? Is he the right man for the job? Was he in the community prior to ever even thinking about running for DA? And I guarantee you, all little boxes will be checked. Yes, he did a good job under tough circumstances, he kept that office running, he kept the grand jury flowing, and yes, he is the right man for the job. So I urge you to talk to the people who work day-to-day with me during my tenure as DA, and I guarantee they will say, "He should be, he should still be the DA," and on June 5th, I ask you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. All right, with that, we will go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order, and we'll begin with invocation from Pastor Nick Seaborn of Raleigh Avenue Baptist Church.
I'll pray first, and then we'll have the pledge. Let's pray. Father, we're grateful for this day. We thank you for Homewood and the gift that she is to us, the community you've placed us in. Father, I thank you for Mayor Scott McBrayer and this City Council, as they serve us faithfully day in, day out, seeking to honor you in what they do. Father, I pray that you would endow them with wisdom and with grace during this meeting, that you would encourage them in their work, and that they would pursue your will as they serve in these roles. We love you, we thank you for Homewood, and ask that you would continue to bless our city, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We'll begin with roll call, Melody.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney?
Here.
Mr. Thames?
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Here.
Mr. McCloskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Mrs. Andres?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
And Mr. Limbaugh. So we have a quorum, two absent.
Thank you. And I'll begin the night's meeting first, entertaining a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes from April 23rd, 2018, which Melody did send out to us.
Send it.
Second.
By Ms. Smith, and second by Mr. Wolverton. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Minutes are approved. All right, we have several board vacancies to at least talk about. We do have a library board nomination potential in Ward 1. Are you guys aware of that? Are y'all ready to open that, or?
We have two absent, so we need to schedule interviews.
Okay, so has that already been opened?
It's been, well, it's been opened twice and closed.
Okay, so, all right.
You're closing on 4/18.
Got you. So you guys got two interviews, need to do your interviews before you make your nomination. Okay.
Do you have a time that you want us to schedule those interviews?
Definitely next week.
Next week?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, we also have a Ward 5 Library Board opening, and I think we're fine to open that, Melody.
Yes, sir. We had a candidate, I mean incumbent, that tendered resignation effective July, so we have an unexpired term, I think that goes through November of 2019, but I think he said he'll be here till July 1st, I believe.
That's what I heard.
But y'all can go ahead and open it if you want to.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we would like to do that.
Until when?
Let's, let's open it till the end of June.
Till, the June, it's like the 25th?
Yeah. That's perfect, yeah.
You wanna, you wanna close it on what day?
Yeah, I didn't even look at a calendar.
You want to give yourself a little, like, June 25th, maybe you could use that?
Yeah. Well, I was gonna say the end of June, but, thank you.
Do you want to just do June 30th, even though it's not a council, and then y'all can sleep?
Yeah. June 30th, well, yeah, June 30th's fine, 29th's that Friday, but.
June 29th?
Yeah, that's fine.
At 4:30, okay.
All right, thank you. And, also Ward 5, we have a nomination for member of the Homewood Environmental Commission. Ms. Andres, I'll let you handle that.
Yes, we would like to appoint Ms. Anita Morgan for the board.
Second.
All right, have a motion by Ms. Andres, and a second by Mr. Higginbotham. I'm going to, still just gonna abstain from this, because I knew.
Oh, sure.
One of the, one of the candidates, connection to my law firm. So with one abstention, I'll go ahead and, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so Ms. Morgan stands approved as newest member to the Homewood Environmental Commission. Also have a Ward 3 BZA opening, are you guys aware of that?
Did that happen recently, Ms. Melody? Because I don't remember that being on the last.
It must have, because it just appeared on my script. Do you want me to check in to it, and y'all can do it on the 23rd?
Just carry that over.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll carry that.
Just to make sure.
All right, so we'll start with the agendas. We actually, Melody, just hold on, let's, we may try to add two items, one on the fly here, one which we did meet about earlier today, we're gonna add to the old business agenda, 11-04-18, which is the mid-year financial report coming through Special Finance Committee meeting tonight. And we would also like to add to the committee referral agenda, a request to address, a request to address traffic concerns on Drake Street behind Piggly Wiggly, coming to us from David Weaver and Walter Jones.
Public safety.
Okay, we'll go and get this assigned, or refer to public safety, Melody, if you're with me on that.
Okay, it'll be 20-05-18.
20-05.
Who is the other person's name besides?
It's David Weaver and Mr. Jones. Okay, and with that, I think those are the only two changes. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as amended.
So moved.
By Mr. McCloskey, second by Mr. Higginbotham. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so agenda does stand approved as amended. We don't have any consent agenda items, so we'll go straight into old business agenda. First item, 05-09-17, which is a request for discussion of citywide lighting options, coming to us through Mayor McBrayer and Charles Zenati, and this was a report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met on May the 7th at 5:00, and we had a report from Mr. Squires, and the committee had, came before the full Finance Committee. We had a vote of 5 to 0 to recommend the approval of train for the audit, and the cost is $1. So, 5 to 0 coming out of Finance.
All right, coming out of Finance with a vote 5 to 0, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mrs. Smith. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that's gonna be approved, Resolution 1858, I believe?
Yes, sir.
That's right.
Okay. All right, next item is 16-01-18, which is a request for consideration to enter into a lease for standardized time clocks, from Melody, and this was also coming through Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, we met, and we had a report from Mr. Burgett, and the vote was 4 to 0 with one abstention, and it would be, the recommendation is the approval of cloud-based option, and that's with, in, let's say, Division of ENCODE, what's the name of it?
ExecuTime.
ExecuTime. So, 4 to 0 with one abstention, and I'll be abstaining from the main vote as well. But that's the report for Finance, so it's gonna be 1859 when we vote.
Can I just clarify one thing, too, that we, that in the discussion, we're not, we're actually purchasing the clocks instead of lease. When we first put that on there, it says lease, but we're actually purchasing the clocks?
Okay, so.
The item said lease, I just wanted to.
Not a lease, we're actually making a purchase.
We're actually purchasing them, yes.
Okay, great. All right, so it's coming out of Finance with a 4-0 favorable vote. I'll entertain a motion for second.
Second.
By Mr. Gualtney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, 16-01-18 stands approved, Resolution.
And one abstention.
And one abstention. Thank you, Mr. Jones. And Resolution 1859 stands approved. All right, next item, 06-30, excuse me, 06-03-18, request to consider purchasing video equipment for use in Rosewood Hall, coming to us from James Yates, and also going through Finance Committee, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir. A vote of 5 to 0 approval from Finance, $34,888.40 from the Building Improvement Fund, 5 to 0 out of Finance.
Thank you, coming out of Finance of favorable vote. Entertain a second.
Second.
By Mr. Gualtney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, that's Resolution 1860, stands approved. Next item is 10-04-18, request for consideration to amend the fiscal year 1718 budgets, coming from, to us from Berkeley and Melody, our city clerk and finance director, and through Finance Committee, Mr. Jones.
5 to 0 to approve the amendments for the budget for 1718.
All right, any questions about the, well, excuse me, I'll entertain a second, first of all?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Smith. Any further questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the amendments to the 1718 budgets are approved, and that's gonna be Resolution Next item, 14-04-18, which is a request for consideration to declare certain equipment surplus, coming from our Fire Chief, John Bresnan, and we'll also get a report from Finance on this from Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend the approval of the surplus list by the chief.
All right, thank you, and Mike, so I think we need a first reading on this, being ordinance?
Yes, sir, ordinance declares certain personal property and equipment a surplus. It's established and declares that the following described personal property attached as Exhibit A is no longer needed for public or municipal purpose, and therefore declared surplus property. Section 2, the mayor and clerk be authorized to dispose of the property by public auction to the highest bid. And the property declared surplus is attached as Exhibit A, which is miscellaneous equipment and furniture from the Fire Department.
Thank you, Mike. So first, I'll entertain a motion for unanimous consent.
So moved.
By Mr. McCloskey, second by Mr. Gualtney. All in, I'll just give him a roll call vote on that, Ms. Melody.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Andres?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
All right, so we have favorable unanimous consent, and now we'll entertain a motion for approval of 14-04-18.
So moved.
By Mr. McCloskey, second by Mr. Higginbotham.
This is ordinance 2695.
Yeah, ordinance 2695, yes, it was item number 14-04-18. Roll call, any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Ms. Melody.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Andres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes.
All right, so that's ordinance 2695 stands approved. Next item, 15-04-18, request to authorize the mayor to sign contract with quality correctional health care to provide health care for our inmates, coming to us from our Police Chief, Tim Ross, and also coming through our Finance Committee, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, the Finance Committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the two-year renewal. 5 to 0 coming out of Finance.
All right, thank you. So favorable vote coming out of Finance for a two-year renewal, entertain a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Thames, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So Resolution 1862 stands as approved. 16-01-15, which is an update on past, present, and future sidewalks, originally coming to us through Jim Wyatt and the Building Engineering and Zoning Department, and this actually went through two committees. We have an item in PND and an item in Finance. Mike, does it matter? I know we got one item number on it, but, to what I'll, let me just begin with a report from Finance.
Okay, sure, Mr. President. The, we met, voted 5 to 0 first to remove it, it was tabled originally, so 5 to 0 to remove it, and then, we then voted 5 to 0 to recommend funding the final design of Plan D, that's in Delta, on Patriot Park extension. We set a bid date, and we're carrying the item over for future projects within sidewalks, but that's 5 to 0 to recommend final design of Plan D.
So, and that is for funding for the design?
For Plan D. That's right, and that's for, you know, for Patriot Park, obviously.
All right, so I'll ask if there's any questions regarding that item. Actually, I need first to entertain a second for, second from Mr. Higginbotham. Any further questions, discussion about the Plan D option? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that's gonna prove the financial part of it. Now, we also had an item in PND. Britt, do you have a report on that?
Yeah, the committee met, and after hearing reports, various reports from Mr. Cobb, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval to move forward with the Salter Road sidewalk project, then carried over the agenda item for future sidewalks.
All right, so is any action needed on that?
If it was on our sidewalk.
Okay. All right, well, with that, I'm just gonna appreciate your report, probably not gonna take any action on it, and we'll let Finance report, and the approval and funding of Plan D stand, which will be Resolution 1863. All right, next item we have is 09-04-18, which is a request for consideration, a petition of annexation for the property located at 928 Del Chris Drive, coming to us from Connie Maury, and our city clerk. And I know we had some, we had to get a good legal on this, Mike, you probably have not had time to review what.
No, sir, we have, we have the ordinance ready, if you want to entertain, it's up to you.
So, so can we go forth with approval condition on your confirming good legal on it?
We have a legal that we've estimated that the owner's gonna get the copy of a deed, and we'll verify it, but it's, it's correct as far as I know.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Then I'll begin with a report from PND on this one, Mr. Thames.
I'm sorry, I missed. I thought you passed, I realized I was something else.
Were you talking in class, sir?
Oh.
Okay. 09-04-18, we'll start with a report.
Yes, sir. The committee met, and we voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval pending Mr. Kendrick's approval of a proper legal description. Mr. Wyatt made the motion, Ms. Andres seconded.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thames, and so, Mike, I guess we'll begin with our first reading.
Yes, sir, it's an ordinance assending to the annexation of certain property or territory to the corporate limits of the city of Homewood, and to alter the, and rearrange and extend the corporate limits of the city, whereas all the owners of property described below did sign and file a written petition with the city clerk requesting that the property described there be annexed to the corporate limits of the city, and whereas the petition filed with the clerk did include a legal description of the property or territory with a map of said property or territory showing its relationship to the corporate limits of the city, and whereas the property or territory described in the petition referred to above has been warranted by all the owners, or owners of the property to be contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Homewood and does not lie within the corporate limits of any other city as shown by the map attached to the petition, and whereas the City Council has determined and found that the matter set forth in the petition are true and correct, and that it is in the public interest that said property be annexed to the city of Homewood, and that the petitioner did request that their petition, in their petition, that the city adopted an ordinance assending to the annexation, and that the corporate limits of the city be extended and rearranged to embrace and include the property described to you, and now therefore, be resolved by the City Council as follows. The council has since the annexation of Lot 4, Block 4, First Edition, the First Forest Brook Estates, which is street address 928 Del Chris Drive, and the same be annexed to the corporate limits of the city of Homewood, and the property shall hereof be made a part of the corporate limits upon the date of publication of this ordinance. Three, that the above described property is not within the corporate limits of the police jurisdiction of any municipality, and the new corporate limits of the city do not lie at any point more than one-half the distance between the old corporate limits of the city and the corporate limits of any other municipality. And four, that the city of Homewood agrees to comply with the provisions of Act 604 relating to the payment of any fire district dues, which are none for this property. Section 5, that the city clerk shall file a certified copy of the ordinance in the office of the judge of probate. Section 6, that a copy of the ordinance be forwarded to tax assessor for Jefferson County. Section 7, that there is excluded from this ordinance any of the property that described to you and is found to be the property of any other person, or that is found to lie within more than one-half the distance between the corporate limits of the city of Homewood and the corporate limits of any other municipality. Section 8, that this ordinance shall be published as provided by law.
Thank you, Mike. With the first reading done, I'll entertain a motion for unanimous consent.
So moved.
By Mrs. Smith. Second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Andres, and roll call vote, Melody.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Andres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes. So, the petition for annexation is approved, ordinance number 2696. Next item will be 06-04-18, which is a request for consideration for permission to work[1745.51] permission to work in the city right-of-way at one thousand twelve, one thousand fourteen, and one thousand eighteen Grace Street, coming to us from Mike Morrow and Greg Cobb and BEZ, and we have a report from Special Issues on this one.
Yes, the committee met last Monday night and voted five to zero to refer this item out to the full council without a recommendation pending a meeting which Mr. Cobb had scheduled with the folks about a retaining wall and the road that were involved. Motion was made by Mr. McCluskey, seconded by Councilor Higginbotham, and again, it's five to zero coming from Special Issues with no recommendation.
Alright, we, we met with Mr. Bill Lavender for Homewood Schools on Friday morning to review the plans, and he said he would take them to Dr. Cleveland, Dr. Cleveland then decided whether or not he would approve it or whether he would send it to the board. So I would ask that if you voted, vote it pending on the school's approval.
Should we just carry it over?
Whatever you do, sure, certainly can do that, certainly can do that.
Without objection, I'll go ahead and carry it over, and Greg, will you let us know? I assume you'll find out about it?
I will.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Alright, so.
Other than the retaining walls, is there anything else outstanding or interesting about the situation?
Not really much of anything to it, he's also going to ask to develop the alley below the houses for rear access into the property, and the one in the front, of course, is required by the fire department, so that's the only other thing you might see is, is to open the alley to the south of him.
Mr. Cobb, is he taking any, anything to account the water coming off of that hill as well?
Yes, sir.
There's any drainage?
Yes, sir, the, the road, I should've said that started on the upper, on the upper end, have a slight incline to it to bring the water back and down the gutter and into the storm system, so that it doesn't shed off onto the properties and new homes being built, so that, that'll be taken care of.
Thank you.
Alright, any further questions? Alright, so without, with no objection, then we'll carry over oh six oh four eighteen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Next item, sixteen oh four eighteen, request to work in the right-of-way for a tree installation at three thirteen Berkeley Place, coming to us from Mr. Waltney, and another report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith?
Yes, met last week, voted four to zero to one, with one extension being Mr. Waltney because it's involving his property, to recommend approval placing, replacing a damaged tree in the right-of-way with two river birch trees, pending approval from Public Works, which Mr. Waltney did speak to Public Works, and that was all covered. Motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham, seconded by Ms. Andress, so we would approve that work in the right-of-way with the proper indemnification agreements.
Alright, so we have approval coming out of Special Issues with proper indemnification agreements, do I have a second? Second by Mr. McCluskey, any further discussion? This is Mr. Waltney's property, so grill him now if you can, see no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so sixteen oh four eighteen, with one extension from Mr. Waltney, thank you. So sixteen oh four eighteen is approved, that's resolution eighteen sixty-four, I believe. Alright, last item under new business, eleven oh four eighteen, which, what we met about tonight, our city's mid-year financial report, coming to us through finance, and Walt, if you can give us a brief report, that would be appreciated.
Sure, the finance committee met tonight, had the report from Ms. Salter, very, very good news on all fronts, we always have some, some cautious information she provides, but overall, very good report for the mid-year review, and the motion coming out of finance was five to zero to accept the mid-year review report.
Alright, so coming out of finance, favorable vote, five to zero, entertain a second. Second by Mr. Higginbotham, any further discussions or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mike, I don't know if that's a resolution or not.
No, it's not, it's just a motion.
Gotcha.
I'm always cautiously optimistic.
Alright, thank you, and thank you, Melody, for your, your always good work.
Thank you, sir.
Also, so we have the committee referral agenda that has been amended, I'll ask for another motion for approval of the specific committee referral agenda as amended. By Mr. Higginbotham, second by Mr. Thames, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so the amended committee referral agenda is approved. Gets us to other new business, fourteen oh five eighteen, which is a request to set a public hearing and referral to the Special Issues Committee for consideration of a variance to the signed ordinance at twenty-eight twenty-one Central Avenue, coming to us from Joshua Gentry and Greg Cobb and the BEZ, and so I gotta come up with a public hearing date, Mike, I don't know.
May twenty-third is the first date you could do it.
May twenty-third?
That's the next meeting.
So we can do it that quickly?
Yes, we're Sunday.
Alright, any, alright, let's go.
Well, can I ask a question, ma'am?
Sure.
Are we, we're having committee meetings that afternoon before the council meeting? Okay, because we'd have to address it in Special Issues first and then have the public hearing, but I guess it'd be fine, because we're just gonna send it out without recommendation, then the public hearing.
Do we want, do we want to put a little time in between it since it's a sign of?
Same, this is for little donkey.
Yeah, why, why don't we go to the, what's the next meeting?
June eleventh.
Let's go, why don't we go to June eleventh, just so we can have a little more time of a public hearing, and we can certainly have it on the committee agenda for the next meeting. Alright, so without objection, we'll set that for public hearing on June eleventh. Alright, next item, fifteen oh five eighteen, which is a request for consideration of approval of a contingency contract for Charles Zenati for working on the citywide lighting project, and Barry, I'll let you speak to this a little bit if you, if you like, well, if you, if you don't like.
No, it's fine, I just have to get down here next to the, the microphone that's available. This is to, to deal with, Mr. Zenati has been helping us with the citywide lighting project, finding our company that we're gonna work with to do our audit and proceeding with that, so that we can hopefully save a lot of money for the city by installing LED lighting and eventually dealing with some other water and sewer issues down the road, so the, the contingency contract is specifically related to his work with the lighting, the lighting project.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Oh, so moved.
By Mrs. Smith, and a second by Mr. Waltney, any further discussions or questions? And with none, then fifteen oh five eighteen, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so that will stand approved, and that'll be resolution?
Eighteen sixty-five.
Thank you, eighteen sixty-five. Next item, request for consideration, authorize the mayor to sign contract with Gonzales Strength on the Rumson Road Project, coming to us from Greg Cobb and the BEZ, and this has to do with our engineering work, basically on the Rumson Road Project, which we've discussed before, I don't know if anyone has any questions or discussion on this, if not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
By Ms. Andress. Second by Mrs. Smith, any further discussion?
What was the dollar amount of the contract?
I don't know, I haven't ever seen it.
Okay.
I should've sent it, Mr. Kendrick, to review first, but I'll, I'll give you my copy now. It's thirty-eight thousand dollars is what the total is on Rumson.
Is that Rumson to Shades Creek, or is that around to the crosswalk?
Did you hear that?
Did you hear that question?
That's where Rumson ties into the Shades Creek piece that's gonna have a crosswalk, they're gonna, they're gonna all come together right there. Yes, ma'am. And Rumson's a very long road, so it's got, it's got some drainage issues on it, there's several inlets that run down, we're gonna put it on the west side of the road.
Yeah.
Which is the YMCA side?
Yes, sir.
Okay. East-west can drive me crazy sometimes, so. Alright, any further questions or discussion? This will come out of our sidewalk, I mean, our.
Yes, sir.
Sidewalk.
Yes, sir.
It's in capital sidewalk construction?
Right, and after Mr. Kendrick reviews the contract and we get the mayor to sign it, we'll, they're ready, they're ready to go.
Okay. Alright, any further questions? I think I've had a, I can't remember if I had a motion or a second on this or not, I think I did, yes, I did, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, item sixteen oh five eighteen is approved, resolution eighteen sixty-six. Next item, seventeen oh five eighteen, which is a request for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at eleven seventeen Hardwick Lane, a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances nineteen-ten and seventeen-fifty, excessive growth, coming from Scott Cook and the code enforcement in the police department, we want to set this for public hearing, and I guess I'll, is June eleventh okay for that?
That's the first time we could do it.
Oh, that is the first one for that one, okay. Without objection, I'll set that public hearing for June eleventh. Next item, eighteen oh five eighteen, which is a request for consideration of an ABC retail liquor license, class one for Saws Barbecue, or Saws Bar Homewood LLC doing business as Saws Bar located at one thousand six Oxmore Road, and Melody, I may let you speak to this, we do not have fire and police, but.
Well, I did, I did receive a letter from Nick Hill today that said that Homewood Fire would have no objection pending the CO, but they, after some things that have happened, they don't, they won't send the letters out until the CO, but I was told by the applicant that they, that, I guess it's like the, what came first, the chicken or the egg, that they can't complete their thing that they need for the CO without our letter for the ABC license, so we're asking y'all if you'll approve it based on no objections from fire, police, and the CO, so that we can at least get the letter stating that they, that we've approved it with those contingencies.
Okay, so they're seeking, they're seeking approval so they can.
Complete construction of the bar.
Work on the CO, but it's all, it's still gonna be contingent on receiving a proper letter from fire and police clearing?
And fire's basically said they'll have no objection, but they're waiting for the CO.
But we just don't have the letter yet, okay. Alright, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
By Mr. Thames.
Second.
Second by Mr. Waltney, any further questions or discussion? Mr. Mayor, sure?
That didn't make sense to me.
I think the fire department's confused, they, they can't process that permit until they get a letter saying they have no objection. I understand they want the CO to be issued before they complete it, but the CO's gotta be in place, means it's a chicken or the egg.
Yeah, it is.
They said that.
I think I'll talk to Nick and.
They, they have people open beforehand, when the fire said okay before they give the CO.
Yeah, but they can't open before they get a CO.
Alright, so when is, so, when is our next meeting?
The twenty-third.
They may just be trying to get a job from the ABC approval.
Okay.
And they can't process it without our letter saying we have no objection.
So that, that's what they, they told us, that without the letter, they cannot complete to get the CO, is what they told us.
That's the case of we need, we need to.
Yeah, I think we.
I mean, the, the motion was. But I just never heard it explained like this. And my motion was still contingent upon approval from fire, sure, so, and it was the same, but, I think they're just in confusion.
I understood that, that fire has no objection?
Yes, fire said that they, they have no objection.
But they don't have a letter.
They won't send the letter out, but we're just needing, but they're needing to know if you'll, if we can do the letter to go to the ABC board, so that they can complete construction and get their CO. So y'all have done it before when we put on other new business where you'll say, base, you'll, you'll prove it based on.
Yeah, but what we've done before is we, we've, we've approved the condition upon the fire sending the letter, what you're telling me now is he's not gonna send a letter.
Not until the, they, because he said that we had a place that already, that they sent a letter and they opened beforehand?
Yeah.
Which was.
I, I think we can talk with them.
Okay, alright, I, I think we're gonna have to.
Understand that.
Without objection, guys, I think, I think we're gonna.
They can't open their business without a CO.
Alright, without objection, no vote, I think we're gonna go and carry this over, and.
Well, you could stand, because I'm saying, move to approve pending fire department's approval.
Okay, in other words, okay, in other words, as we've done in the past, where the letter is actually submitted, okay, alright, so we're gonna clarify, if not change, what, what was approved, which is the actual letter being delivered, that's your motion, Mr. Thames? And second by Mr. Waltney?
Yes, sir.
Okay, does everyone kind of understand what we're talking about?
So you want the letter obtained from fire before we give them the letter?
Yes, that's what, that's what is the motion.
We're still waiting for every single thing that is part of the process.
It's still gonna have to all be like all other projects.
Okay.
So, alright, any further questions or discussion, Mr. Jones?
Well, just that, I mean, is timing of, of the essence here, I mean, typically, we, we used to send all these to, to public safety, remember, you had to work through all of them, I, I'm, I'm more comfortable if we work through things through the committee structure as opposed to just.
We, we have one that's going to committee that is further away than this one, but some of these are where they were needing it with time being of an essence, we've put, we've started putting them on other new business, but we can certainly go back to that, but we do have one that we sent, we're sending to committee because they're a ways away from having a CO, being ready for a CO.
Yeah, and I'm, I know we've done some of these before, I mean, I think it's a matter of timing, it's of the essence.
The last time we did it was at Christmas when you were off.
Yeah.
Right, right.
But every time we've done it in new business, all the stuff has been, been approved, we've had fire approval, we've had fire and police approval before we've gotten to this point.
Is approval pending?
Oh, have we pending on?
I think it's confused.
Yeah, it's been, it's been approved pending, but never pending a CO. We've always had the CO.
Alright.
It's a little different.
We could issue a CO without the fire department, sign off whenever.
They can't get, they can't open without a CO. They do, they're, they're guilty of a misdemeanor.
Alright, so we still have a motion for approval with the fire and police letter being submitted beforehand. I really think it's a question of whether we want to do it in, in, at council, or we want to either carry it over or take it through committee. I have a motion and a second.
I would say at the very least, we don't, we don't send it back to committee, to that point, you are starting to build in a lot more time, and it's already here, if, if the council wants to carry it over, that, that's fine, too.
But just this time, it actually worked, because you're having committee and council both on the twenty-third, so if you carry it over, either way, it'll be the same this time, because we're having them both together, because of Memorial Day.
Yeah, but if I understand correctly, that Mr. Thames' motion and Mr. Waltney's second is essentially bringing it back to the normal process.
They're saying, they're saying that we can't give the letter without all our letters, they just don't have to. It just doesn't have to come back to you, we can do it as soon as we get the.
As chairman of public safety, I'm fine with it.
Although, although the better, the better normal process is, is if you're gonna do it at council to already have your police and fire in place, but, but we have done this in the past.
Sure.
Okay, so we still have a, a motion and a second on the floor, any further questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
No. No. I just said, no, I'm with you.
I think that's seven, a seven-two vote.
Seven to two, is that what it is?
Seven to two.
It was, it's, it's Smith and Andress?
Yes.
Right, I will not be invited to the grand opening.
Okay.
As someone that had to personally drive to Montgomery and hand pick up my liquor license the day I opened for business, I can understand a little bit the frustrations they're doing there, so.
Alright, eighteen oh five eighteen stands approved, and that's not a resolution, alright, Mike?
No, sir, it's just having no objection.
Alright, last item, nineteen oh five eighteen, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for period of April twenty-third through May thirteen, and that coming through finance and, Mr. Higginbotham, I know you enjoyed yourself, that's why I heard you talking about it. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this was an especially enjoyable set of, set of.
At least it wasn't the end of the fiscal year where you're having to struggle two different POs.
The amount of uniforms work activity we have is amazing, as I said to Ms. Salter, I thought that I might suggest that we just all get matching hats and leave it at that, that might go a little faster, but, anyway, I did go through all of them, I had two or three questions, and, and Ms. Salter and her staff have answered those, so I have no objections to anything that was, that was in the, the POs, they were just lengthy, that's all, so I move approval. Man, the, the amount of uniforms and work activity we have is amazing. As I said to Ms. Salter, I thought that I might suggest that we just all get matching hats and leave it at that. That might go a little faster, but anyway, I did go through all of them. I had two or three questions and, and Ms. Salter and her staff have answered those, so I have no objections to anything that was, that was in the, the POs. They were just lengthy, that's all. So I move approval.
We're working on the solutions that won't be so copernian, I promise you.
Thank you for your, thank you for your good work. All right, entertain a second.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Thames. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the vouchers stand as approved. All right, that gets us to our, end of our agenda, and Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, sir.
And Mr. Waltney?
I only have one thing to add. So Brett and I will be hosting our friends and neighbors in Rosedale this coming week on Saturday from 8:00 AM until 1:00 PM. It's kind of dual-fold. It's the Rosedale Day of Service where we'll be going out into the neighborhood, doing some yard work, painting a porch, scraping some sides of houses so we can go back again on a future date and do some additional painting, but so if you can, please feel free to come out and join us. But then at noon, once we finish the service project, we're going to have at Supreme Park, a cookout and a little send-off party for Supreme Park, which will be getting razed and rebuilt in the next few weeks. So it'll be good times for all, so if you can, come out and join us and have a good time.
What is that date?
It's 5:19 at 8:00 AM at Supreme Park.
Gotcha, all right.
Till 1:00 PM.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Thames?
Yeah, just echo what Andy said and also thank Trinity. They're, they're providing a big group of volunteers to help us out. No P and D for next week, and I don't guess we've had council since we love Homewood Day. Just thank Parks and Rec and everybody involved for putting it together. It was fantastic. The mayor dialed up perfect weather. And everybody had a great time, nobody fell off floats, so.
So you're not setting P and D?
No P and D.
Okay.
And that's it, thank you.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick things. First, wanted to thank those who came out to our Ward Two Town Hall meeting last week. Last Thursday, we had a, a nice discussion about a number of issues and also want to thank the folks at Trinity West Homewood for being willing to host that for us. It was, it was a good, very productive meeting. I also just wanted to send out a thank you. You know, our, our police department here does exceptional things every day, so that probably goes without saying, but story today of the, the gentleman that, that they, they talked off a ledge, a highway there, I don't know if y'all have seen that story today, just, just amazing.